Good evening. Welcome to the Wadsworth City Council Committee of the Whole Finance for Tuesday, March 4, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley.
Here.
Hanlon.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Parrish.
Here.
Rosberg.
Here.
Stugmeyer.
Here.
Yurczak.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. May have approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Whole Finance from February 18, 2025.
Who'll make that motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes have been approved. Brings us to draft legislation for this evening. First one is an ordinance, I believe, on taxation. Ms. Fix, do you want to take that?
Yes. First, I'd like to just give a brief update on income tax collections that they're coming in much differently than they did in '24. We ended '24 at negative 2.3% growth. And we're almost through our collections for March, up about 15% year-to-date. I expect that will level out some. We see that as the year progresses, but we're also starting on a real positive note. So, I know there was some concern about that last year during the budget, so.
If I might add to that, I've saw that some of the other communities are having that same increase that we are. So, I mean, it's good to hear.
Well, it's the first part of the year that, I mean, businesses and stuff are not getting that paid out. Like you say, it'll probably level out towards September.
Yes. It will probably take somewhat of a fall, but it's a good sign. This ordinance is an annual ordinance. It's based on the budgeted revenue that was in your budget book. I think there was a slight adjustment for the street improvement. Once we knew what the '24 number is, we adjust that accordingly. But you can see the percentages and the historical information that I provided on this sheet. So, are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Let's see. How about Mr. Perry? Will you read that tonight?
Sure.
Three readings, Ms. Fix, is that okay?
If, yes, that's fine.
Okay. Let's put that on second.
That'll be ordinance number 25-049.
All right. Then the next one has to do with our ordinances. Who would like to take that?
Mr. Morris, do you have anything to comment on that?
I don't. It came out of Planning Commission. I know who talked about it. Last time we talked about economic development was back in February. This is essentially to push out our Central Business District to talk about more of those properties that are currently, a lot of them are residential, but they're in commercial right now, to kind of give them a mixed use or essentially what they are right now.
I would only add that it has the potential to resolve some conflicts that are pending in terms of the usage of certain properties that surround the Central Business District. So, it's a good thing for property owners and it's a good thing for business owners potentially.
This covers, if I'm correct and remember correctly, a house in like downtown area that may have been, become a business can now, with this legislation, go back to being residential. And currently, right now, that cannot happen.
That is correct. Currently, it's a non-conforming use, so it would not be permitted to revert back to its original use.
So, this would take care of that.
That's one of the aspects that the ordinances would take care of.
So, I've been contacting. I know of one property that's been for sale, that this has been holding up the sale of this. Is this something council's comfortable passing tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
We've discussed it a couple of different times in economic development.
Okay. Mr. Yurczak, will you suspend and call that?
Yes.
That'll be number 25-050.
Okay. That brings us to the regular council agenda. Ordinance 25-030. Ms. Hines?
I guess we'll move it to third unless.
Okay.
Mr. Morris, do you need that?
I don't. It's something I'm preparing. The contract's been prepared. I advise them that sometimes they go three readings, so it should not be an issue.
Okay. Move that to third. Next one, Mr. Rosberg on second reading, 25-032.
We'll take that on to third.
Okay. And you have the next one, 25-033.
Could I ask a question of that? Have we heard anything back from building just saying you had access?
We have continuing discussions. There has been some positive movement in those discussions. I don't have anything yet to report to council about definitively where that location will be, but we're moving in the right direction, I would tell you.
So, you're thinking within the next month or so, maybe?
I would love to give you that deadline. It's not necessarily up to us, but we're pushing in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could also stay on 25-032, as the council might recall, we actually have received and closed the process of receiving proposals in regards to that work. So, we now have them in-house and we are currently reviewing them. If you would consider perhaps suspending the rules and allowing that to pass tonight, it might keep us on track of potentially selecting a consultant and awarding that contract sooner than waiting for our next council meeting, which might, we might be ready to do that before then.
I think the concern we're having right now is knowing that we have that access and where the access point would be. So, I think that's kind of what I was thinking of going to.
That's why I keep asking the question.
Yeah. This one, remember, is, it's only authorizing the selection of a consultant, which still would be at least 60 to 90 days away from a concept plan that would definitively need direction on what access point is where. All I'm saying is we've kind of moved quickly to try to post this opportunity for vendors. We solicited proposals in a relatively quick format. We received five proposals on that and we've begun the process just today, quite honestly, of reviewing those proposals. I spoke briefly with Mr. Williams before the meeting started and hearing loud and clear that council wanted sort of to be involved in that process, we're arranging a time to meet so that he can see those proposals too in the process. So, everything's moving along a timeline in an attempt to get a consultant under contract sooner rather than later. I just share that with council. Obviously, two more weeks isn't the end of a process. We can certainly wait that long. It just, I think we'll be ready to select a consultant before then.
You got five to review, you say? You have five to review?
We have, we received five responsive proposals, yes.
I support suspending it, suspending the rules.
I think so too, because it's not, it's not going, they're not going to do any design work yet that would hinder or affect that decision of where the access will be. So, I'm fine with that as well.
Chairman?
We'll suspend it.
See what happens.
We'll see what happens, yes.
Okay. Next one, Mr. Rosberg on sidewalks?
I think, you know, with spring coming, I think it's time to move this along also. Maybe get the bids out there a little early.
Yep, I agree. Suspend and call that one.
Suspend it.
And Mr. Stugmeyer, 25-036?
I believe the same thing on that one. We had talked about in safety, going two readings on that. So, I'll suspend the call so we can get movement on those bids as well.
Safety, what do you mean service?
What's that?
Service?
Service, I'm sorry, service.
Why?
No, no.
Okay. You're going to suspend and call?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have 25-037. Again, Mr. Stugmeyer?
I believe we did the same thing on that, said we'd go two readings. Anything change on that?
This can actually go three readings on this one. We don't have the commitment need yet for.
Okay. Then again on 25-040?
That was with the, that, this one and the next one are both related to the fiber optic project. And to keep going on that, I believe we talked about going two readings, suspending and calling both of those. Is that still?
Correct. Yes. That would be the request.
That'd be for 040 and for 041, both.
Okay. So, that brings us to 25-042. Councilmember Stugmeyer?
Let me see, design, oh, that'll go to third.
Actually, I would make a similar request that I made on Brickyard Project here. As the council may know, we have reached the end of the proposal period. We've received five proposals from consultants on this particular project. Also, we've begun the review process there. Similarly to the Brickyard, I'm going to discuss the proposals with Mr. Williams so that council is engaged at the proposal level, if you will. And I think we will be ready to award a contract to a selected consultant prior to our next council meeting. Again, that consultant, as all the proposals, contained everything from the public communication portion all the way through the design construction documents. So, we have a ways to go in that overall process. Certainly, by no means would anyone be negatively affected if we selected a consultant and moved forward with them prior to the next council meeting, because all of the consultants proposed a rather large public charrette process and inputs part as requested by our proposal. So, I think what we'd like to do is, again, discuss some of those proposals with Mr. Williams as the council liaison and get some input and understanding on those processes. And then ultimately, we'd be ready to move forward. As part of that too, I think it might be beneficial for us to invite maybe the top two scoring consultants in and interview them and talk to them a little bit more about some of our concepts and concerns in those projects. And that would all be able to be done before our next council meeting in terms of selecting a person. So, we think we can move relatively quickly on this process.
Would they be available for Monday for, you know, the public ways committee?
I don't know that we'll be able to get them back quickly.
That quick, okay.
I have a question. I've had a couple people ask me and I just would like some clarification. So, with this, are we starting totally over from, I mean, I know this was all done a couple years ago. So, are we starting totally over or are we building on some of the work that was done then?
So, I can tell you, if you recall some of our discussions during the budget preparation, I think council expressed and what I heard was that while we did do a process that came up with some conceptual designs, there were certainly some concerns with the results of those conceptual designs. And so, it was council's wish that we look and explore a new consultant to reengage our public and business owners and property owners, also take input from elected officials, and that we use some of what we have already created, our own work product, but also kind of get a fresh look at what's happened in our downtown, what might be amenable, and really get that input. So, I would say, Ms. Hanlon, to your question, I think it's a combination. It's a combination of not starting over totally, but taking what we used in terms of data and what we have collected. But, but there might be a reason to move forward differently than what we currently have.
Well, because, I mean, how long's it been since that first process?
It was all 2019.
That's what I thought. So, it's been a long enough time that you certainly, I mean, this is what I responded. You wouldn't just take that plan and do it, but I didn't think we were like starting at point zero. We were going to start with what had been suggested before.
We obviously have data that was collected during that time. I think that data can be used in reference, but we have new property owners, we have new folks, we have new constituents, we have new ideas, we have new elected officials.
And I'm sure we'll come up with new things that a lot of people don't like.
And so, we want to make sure that we keep that door open, but also not start from square one, because we already have some of that work in place. That, that means that the selected consultant, whoever that may be, has to understand that there's a data set that they can refer to, but that we're interested in them listening and understanding where we're at, but also applying their ideas to what we have and what we don't have yet. So, it's a combination of using what we have, but also moving forward with a fresh look, fresh eyes on something.
If I might also add, you know, downtown's changed. You know, we're about to, you know, have a turnover from the Central Intermediate School. We now have a pocket park. We've done some improvements to our southwest parking lot. So, you know, there's things that have changed since that original plan went in. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea to get some fresh eyes, as you said.
Mr. Hiscok, I have a question regarding this and then also back to the Brickyard. Can you give a quick overview of what, how you evaluate the proposals that came in? Who consists of that group that reviews them? Do you have a scorecard? Are we looking at lowest bid? Are we looking at best bid? You know, best, because I think we had some challenges with our last consultant. I would be interested in seeing an overview of those scorecards and where these different bids are coming in.
Sure.
Would be my reason for not suspending and calling. And I ultimately would be interested in seeing the scorecards versus the amount of the bid.
Sure. I'll give you a general overview on that.
Sure, that's all.
So, as a statutory city, it actually says that there are two selectors on qualified consultants. That is the appointing authority, which would be the service director in this realm, as well as the city engineer. So, those are the statutory required reviewers of proposals of these types of things. This is a little bit different than a lowest and best bid situation, because what we were seeking were qualified consultants on a design contract. So, they weren't submitting a proposal that had a cost associated with it. They were encouraged to provide cost information, but you actually cannot ask for that kind of a proposal in this situation. We're only reviewing their qualifications. And so, what types of things do you use in a scoring matrix to review qualified service consultants? You do things like their experience, their availability for your project, their knowledge of your project, their ideas as to initial offsets, what their proposals might include, their, their design of how they would go about coming up with our project results and benefits. And then a look at some of the things which I might have mentioned earlier, like their experience of those who they, who they are designating to work on these projects. So, you use a generalized matrix. That matrix is allowed to be set forth by the entity who is reviewing the qualifications. So, it's us. Any city, school districts use a similar basis of examination. And then what'll happen is, in this case, Mr. Davis and myself will score those entities and those proposals. What we've added to the mix here, based upon the discussions that we've had and knowing that some of these projects are hallmark projects in our community, we wanted council to have a little bit of a say. You don't have an official vote, but you should be involved in this process. And we think we identified that during the budget process as something that perhaps we were less than satisfied with in the last process. So, in talking with Mr. Williams previous to that, I said, how would you feel about being a part of some of these initial discussions about what we're seeing in these proposals? And so, that's what I was making reference to earlier when I said, you know, right before the meeting started, I asked Dave for some availability later in this week and we might be able to get together and I could share the proposals with him. I thought we could have Mr. Davis on board with that too, so we could have just a discussion about the proposals as we see them and go through them. We have to score them ultimately, and we will do that using that matrix process.
And do you and Mr. Davis score them together or do you score them separately and then review?
Traditionally, we've done them separately. That's the way I like to operate, so that he's not influenced by my opinions, just as I would not be influenced by his opinions. And I think it's worked pretty well, because we come from two different professional backgrounds. Him, obviously with an engineering basis, me with a contractual schedule-based basis. So, we've done pretty well in the selection of consultants to date, and I think it's reflected in some of the projects that we're moving forward on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Yurczak, excellent question. And thank you, Mr. Hiscok, for the explanation.
Sure. Sure. I'm happy that we're going to have a more collaborative process on the front end, which hopefully results in the right selection overall.
Thank you.
Mr. Stugmeyer, suspend and call and see what happens. 25-044, again. We'll go to three readings on that. All right. And 25-045, Ms. Hines?
I'm gonna three readings unless.
Okay. Take that to third. Any other business? We do have another ordinance, tabled ordinance, which we need to table again. Any comments, Mr. Morris?
I went through and mapped out. This is complex. We had, I mapped out with Ms. Darlington as well. We have multiple pieces of legislation that are all going forward that have to go through Planning Commission as well. So, we've mapped it out. So, if we start on, start our readings on April 22, 2025, we should have ability to do three readings on all the legislation that's necessary before that June 18 date. The June 18 date is the 180 days after it was laid before council, which would be an automatic denial of the annexation. So, before that, so if we start on April 22, we should be able to do everything we need to do.
Mr. Morris, I just don't remember. I thought, was it, you said 180 days? I thought it was 120.
Or 120 days.
Oh, okay. Okay. I did do the math, but when you said 180, I wanted to be sure we weren't missing that.
Yeah, 120 days. Sorry.
That's all right. Anything else?
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. President, I move that ordinance number 24-048 regarding the annexation of 61.4450 acres of land to be laid on the table until April 22, 2025, Committee of the Whole, and to be placed on council's agenda for April 22, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Ordinance 25-048 has been tabled till April 22, 2025. Mr. Copley? Did you want to talk about that now or during regular council?
I believe, I believe that that's under correspondence on the regular agenda, but I can talk about it now if you want. I'll leave that up to you, Mr. President.
We have some time. You know, if you just want to talk about it, we can move.
So, I had given some copies here to council members just to make this a little bit easier, but we've received three separate applications for placement of farmland into an agricultural district. If you look in the little handout I gave you, the two-page one, that's basically a breakdown of what the agricultural district is. As many of you know, there's agricultural zoning, which is one thing. You have the CAUV, which is a taxation. And then you'll also have this agricultural district that's defined in Chapter 929 of the Ohio Revised Code. They're all three different, but they're intertwined and they work together. So, essentially what this agricultural district is and what these individuals are asking us to do in this renewal process is to allow them to stay in the agricultural district and they get certain benefits by doing that. And so, if you look down here, it says owners of the land in the agricultural district receive, well, one, they'll get deferments for any new assessments that they might have. So, water, sewer systems, et cetera. They also get certain legal protections against like nuisance lawsuits. So, if someone were to move into a home right beside these properties, you know, they start complaining, they want to sue because of, you know, manure smell, something along those lines, there's protections for those individuals so that they don't have to battle those lawsuits. And then lastly, there's also some kind of a limited protection with eminent domain. So, that's the benefits that these agricultural districts get. And I tried to outline that here for you. The second piece of paper here, the single piece of paper, I actually got this from Ms. Darlington. Tammy had put this together years ago, and this is kind of a step-by-step process of where do we go next, what do we do next? So, now that we've received this, we need to have a public hearing within 30 days. So, the way it lays out, we need to have a public hearing on these three applications at the March 18 council meeting. Okay? And then there's other requirements here. Ms. Darlington would have to send certified mail and letting the applicant know that's when we're doing the hearing. But it's all laid out real nice here for you. Prior to that, we're hoping to have a little bit more information. You'll look on the city council agenda. You'll actually be able to see the applications that were submitted. They've already gone to the auditor and they've been approved by the auditor. So, any questions? That's just a basic overview.
So, so this isn't a renewal. This is a brand-new thing?
No, these three are all renewals.
They're all renewals?
Yeah. So, every five years they have to renew.
Five years, okay.
And so, the five years has come up. And statutorily, under Ohio Revised Code, they have to apply within a certain amount of time after the first of the year, and then we have to address it as a municipality within a certain time. So, the timetables, they're all laid out here for you.
Any other questions? Any other business from council or administration? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
Second. We're adjourned. Will the regular meeting of Wadsworth City Council for Tuesday, March 4, 2025, please come to order? Will you please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and the privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Yurczak?
Here.
You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes for council work session and regular council meetings on February 18, 2025. May have a motion to approve them.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes for council work session and regular council meetings on February 18, 2025 have been approved. Any visitors in the audience who would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to address council. Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence.
Yes, Mr. President, we had correspondence. On February 28, 2025, I received three renewal applications for the placement of farmland in an agricultural district. The first one is from Clampco Real Estate LLC. The second one is from Jared Harris, and the third one is from Melvin Long and Barbara Prentice. In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 929.02, the legislative body is required to conduct a public hearing on the applications within 30 days of the application was filed with the clerk. After speaking with the law director, the next council meeting within the 30-day requirement period would be March 18.
Very good. We've discussed this in Committee of the Whole. Is there any further questions? So, we'll set a meeting for March 18?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
That takes us to our committee and commission reports. Public Service Committee, councilmember Stugmeyer?
Public Service Committee will next meet on next Tuesday, March 11. That is a special time at 5:00 PM, a half hour earlier. We'll have a presentation on the thermostats and the energy.
Very good. Public Safety Committee, councilmember Copley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting on public safety will be on Wednesday, March 12, at 4:30 PM here in council chambers.
Okay. Public Ways, councilmember Rosberg?
Public Ways will be meeting Monday, March 10. That's this coming Monday, 5 o'clock here in council chambers.
It should be 6 o'clock.
It should be. I'm sorry. I was reading the wrong line. It is 6 o'clock.
Okay.
My apologies.
I was getting ready to make a note here. Economic Development Planning Committee, councilmember Yurczak?
Mr. President, EDMP will next meet Monday, the 10th, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Mr. President, EDMP will next meet Monday, the 10th, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Okay. Committee of the Whole met tonight at 6:00 PM. Airport Commission, council member Stugmeyer.
Next meeting, the airport commission is yet to be determined. Probably be coming up in April.
April, yeah. Stormwater Commission, council member Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting on stormwater will be on Tuesday, April the 8th, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers, just before public service.
Shade Tree Commission, council member Heinz.
The Shade, thank you, Mr. President. The Shade Tree Commission will meet on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 5:00 here in council chambers, and that will be the first meeting of our...
Calendar year.
Calendar year, yes.
Okay. Very good. Planning Commission will meet Monday, the 10th of March at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Cemetery Board, council member Yurczak.
Cemetery Board will next meet Wednesday, March 19th, at 5:00 PM in council chambers.
Cable TV Commission, council member Hanlon.
The Cable TV Commission will meet on April 3rd at 4:00 in council chambers. And I did want to mention at our last meeting, we welcomed a new member of the commission. Patty Haskins has joined that commission.
Senior Citizen Commission, council member Parrish.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Senior Citizen Commission is going to be Monday, April 7th, at 3:30 at Supremum Center, and they have a wonderful opportunity to participate. They have their spring fling on March 8th this coming week, and it's in cooperation with the student council of the high school. It's from 2:00 to 4:00. Very nice, nice gesture by the high school students.
Very good. Thank you for those reports. Brings us to the reading of the legislation. Will the clerk please read the legislation?
We're going to start with first readings this evening. We have ordinance number 25-049 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend section 34.36 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to provide for the allocation of income tax receipts of $3,958,711 during fiscal year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-049 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-049 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-050 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurczak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance to enact new section 154.170 through 154.175 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth establishing a transitional mixed-use district, TMU, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-050.
Second.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes. Mr. President, I move that we call the question on ordinance number 25-050.
Hearing no objection to council member Yurczak's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-050?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-050 has been adopted.
Our second reading this evening, ordinance number 25-030 on second reading sponsored by council member Jeanne Heinz and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance approving the execution of a job creation grant program agreement with Midwest integration and automation consistent with the guidelines attached to ordinance 20-095 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-030 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-030 has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number 25-032 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at Public Ways. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to negotiate and enter into an agreement for professional design services for design of the Brickyard Park Improvements Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number, or to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-032.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurczak?
No.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hold on. Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
No.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yeah, yes, I see.
Okay, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-032.
Hearing no objection to council...
Mr. President, if I may interject, there were only five yays on that. That's not enough. We need six. There were two no's, so therefore we can't suspend.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah. Good catch.
Thank you.
I'm glad you were here tonight.
Yes, so am I.
So you want to put that on third reading?
So, Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-032 on third reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-032 has been placed on third reading.
Okay. Ordinance, ordinance number 25-033 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at Public Ways. An ordinance determining to proceed with repairing, replacing, and constructing of certain sidewalks in the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-033.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-033.
Hearing no objection to council member Rossbert's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-033?
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-033 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-036 on second reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to negotiate and enter into an agreement for professional engineering services for the design of the Good Avenue and High Street water line replacement project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Yurczak?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-036.
Hearing no objection to council member Stugmeyer's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-036?
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-036 has been approved. Adopted.
Ordinance number 25-037 on second reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing and directing the interim director of public service to advertise for and receive bids and enter into a contract for Pebble Lime for the city of Wadsworth Water Treatment Plant and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-037 to third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-037 has been moved to third reading.
Ordinance number 25-040 on second reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to purchase materials for CityLink's Fiber to the Home project, fiber project, from Gray Bar Electric through the Omnia Partners Public Sector Cooperative Purchasing Organization or a vendor offering a lower price on a specific item under another state-approved purchasing cooperative and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-040.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
And Stugmeyer?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-040.
Hearing no objection to council member Stugmeyer's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-040?
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Yurczak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.